Welcome back to beautiful scenic Burlington. We're here at the Winuski School District, where the State Redistricting Committee is holding a public hearing on Act 73, which is a recent, I guess, state law that proposes consolidating school districts into, what I read was about six or 10 school districts around the state. So this is a a public hearing, I guess, to maybe hear from the public. This is our first time at Winuski School District. Hopefully, they will uphold our First Amendment rights here, unlike the Burlington School District. But we'll see. Maybe we'll get a chance to ask some people why they're why they're here and what they have to say. And here's some of the opinions from the people. I don't know if this meeting is being broadcast. But one would hope so. It sounds like an important meeting. Here we've got some, some flags flying. I've been seeing people going in this door, so I'm going to assume that that's where people are coming for the meeting. I haven't seen too many people coming in. Maybe if we see someone, we'll we'll ask them if we're in the right place. Let's see here. Oh, this is looking more promising. There's definitely something going on. Wow. Alright, you've got a middle high school over there. A cafe and store. And some local media. A library. Alright. Oh, thanks. Thanks for the tip. I'll go take a look. Oh, it's not, it's not live. No worries. Oh, no, we can't go through there, but we'll take a look at that in a second. Wow, what a beautiful building. Oh, hey. Can I sneak in here? I just want to take a picture of the dragon.
Oh, sure. Go ahead. I don't want to put you in here.
Oh, thank you. Alright, so this is the dragon. Wow. That's beautiful. Alright, thank you. Appreciate that. Are you here for the meeting? Yeah. Yeah, you're welcome. Hey, how you doing? Good? You're here for the meeting, I take it? Remind me again, are you NBC5?
Yeah, yeah, Jackson.
Todd.
Hey, Todd. We met before, right?
Yeah, yeah, we met on the street, I think, when there was that, like, bomb scare.
Yeah.
On Pearl Street.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right over in the auditorium. It should be starting soon.
Yeah. Have a good one. Alright. We've got a district office over here. Cafeteria and the gym. Okay. Is this the, uh, the meeting?
Yes. Do you need to sign in? Or are you just here in other fashions?
I'm just here in other fashions, yeah. Very wow. So this is the auditorium. And the stage. Very cool.
Yes, and they are asking for to go to sign in. They won today. And it's gonna be all sad at it, girls.
So there's a sign in here and I think I recognize some folks over there. Maybe there's some folks from the school district here. I was at a meeting with Tom Flanagan. He has a monthly meeting at the Skinny Pancake where anyone can come and have like a chat with him around a table. At Skinny Pancake and the redistricting was one of the things that came up. Okay. And one of the things that he mentioned was the possibility of Winuski School District merging with Burlington School District. Oh, let's go take a look at this. Wow. This is a good spread we got here. That's some impressive cookie baking. Wow. Wonder who baked all those cookies? Anyone's throat's part? Alright, so you can you can write your comments on a sticky note? Zoom in on these priorities or outcomes. Quality of education. Equitable opportunities. Coherency and consistency. Economies of scale. Efficient governance. Cost effectiveness. Or something else. Alright, write a note to the task force. The Vermont, the Vermont School District Redistricting Task Force. Haven't heard about that before. Know your rights. As our viewers on this channel know, we are a big fan of knowing your rights. And we always try to peacefully and lawfully exercise our rights. And over here, you have a right to remain silent. Not always a right I'm the best at exercising. This is about what to do if ICE comes to your door. It's interesting. Ask them to identify themselves. Request a warrant. We always appreciate when people identify themselves. I had a conversation with a city of Burlington employee today and I asked for his name and he graciously gave it to me, which I very much appreciate. Wow, what a beautiful night. Hey, how you doing? I was just collecting people's thoughts on the redistricting. If anyone has anything to say. Yeah. Hey, if you have anything to say about redistricting, I'd love to hear it.
We're actually here for basketball practice.
Oh, okay. Alright. Enjoy. Alright, so we got basketball practice going on at the same time. It's a beautiful time of day. And there's a security camera recording us. Hey, if you're here for the redistricting meeting, I'm asking people what they have to say or, you know, if they want to say why they're here.
To listen and learn.
Alright, great. Thank you. We're also here to listen and learn. Awesome. Good speed, good foot speed. Love to see it. People are still coming in. It's right around 6:00 PM. So I suspect, uh, well, I wonder if the meeting will start on time at 6:00 PM or if it'll wait a little bit longer for people to trickle in. As you can see, there's a bunch of cars in the parking lot. If you're here for the redistricting meeting, I'm just asking people why they're, why they came and if they have anything to say.
Um, well, I'm an assistant superintendent.
Oh, okay.
So I'm interested in seeing what the future of Vermont education might look like.
Alright, thank you very much. There's one of our Vermont Assistant Superintendents. It's great to see curious people coming out to learn more. If you're here for the redistricting, I'm just asking people why they're coming and if they have anything they want to say.
I have a lot to say.
Okay. Alright, yeah, no worries. Hey. If you're here for redistricting, I'm just asking people if they have anything to say or hi. Alright. Hey, how you doing? Hey, if you're here for redistricting, I'm just asking people why they're here and if they have anything they want to say.
Yeah, I'm just here to learn more.
Alright, great. Wonderful. Have a great time. Not to put people on the spot. Hi, I'm just asking people if you're here for the redistricting, if you have anything you want to say or okay. Have a great day. Hi, well, I'm here for the redistricting meeting and I'm just asking people if they hey, how you doing?
Do you have questions for the kids?
If they have anything, um, you want to say why you're here or, um, do you have anything you want to say?
Because my mom is here.
Okay.
And my sister is here.
That's great.
And also, today at school, I saw an NBC news truck and I agree made this comment. I want to be on the news.
You want to be on the news?
Yeah, I've already been on it once.
That's awesome. I'm a small social media channel, but you know, hopefully you'll be on it and I'm Beautiful Scenic Burlington.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm Daisy Berbecco. I'm the state representative.
I'm Todd DeLuca.
Cool, thanks for meeting.
Nice to meet you. Yeah. Hi, I'm just asking people if they're here for the redistricting meeting, if they want to say why they're here and if they have anything to say about the meeting. Or about redistricting or anything.
Just here to get informed and weigh in as necessary.
Alright, great. Have a good evening. Hi, if you're here for the redistricting meeting, I'm just asking people why they're here and if they have anything they want to say.
Okay.
Yeah. Or, or not, it's fine too.
Yeah, I'm just here, I have two kids in the school district, so just wanting to learn more about what's happening with the redistricting.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. I love this evening light. Hi, I'm just asking people if you're here for the redistricting meeting, if you want to say why you're here, if you have anything you want to say.
Sure.
I just run a small social media channel. I'm just kind of asking.
So you're independent?
Yeah.
You work for yourself?
Yeah, I just work for myself. Beautiful Scenic Burlington?
Um, yeah, I don't mind speaking.
Alright.
I'm from the EWSD District. I've been taxpayer there since 2011. I've been a parent there since 2012. I've been a staffer there since six years ago. Can't do that now.
Okay.
And I'm just really frustrated that we have a district that years ago, when the state asked districts to merge, we did merge.
Yeah, I remember, I remember that going on.
And so we did what we were asked to do and now they're telling us we're going to merge into a district that is three times bigger than the largest of all of the other districts in the state.
Yeah.
Our kids will not have representation the way other kids in the state will. And families will.
Do you feel like there were any lessons from the merger that you went through that has any informs kind of your, your feelings on this merger? Or potential merger?
I really wasn't aware of it. I can't remember exactly when it happened. I think it was either early in my daughter's education or it was definitely before I was working in the district, so I maybe wasn't paying as close attention.
Yeah.
But yeah, when this was announced, I just felt really angry.
Yeah.
That that's not right, that our district did what they were asked to do and now it's just this big top-down push. I feel like top-down is kind of what's happening in a lot of things and I don't like it.
Yeah.
I think local control is one of the things that we're good at here in Vermont and it's one of the things that people love about Vermont and I don't want to lose it.
Alright, yeah. Thank you very much. Local control is it's definitely a buzzword in Vermont. There's a lot of small towns and small, small school districts. And there was a a merger process for a lot of school districts that I think went on for a long time and was pretty controversial. Hi. I saw the, saw the pace of that woman and I didn't feel like interrupting her. It is nice to hear from people, some of the reasons why they're here. And their thoughts on the on the school district. Redistricting. Consolidation. Hi, I'm just asking people who are going to the redistricting meeting if they have any thoughts they want to share on why they're here or anything else.
I'm a little late for it, so
Okay.
I'm just gonna talk in there, but maybe if you're out here later, I will.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you. One of the things that I like to cover on this channel is local media in action. And so I think we'll just take a peek at the setup over here. Wow. We'll be quiet, though. Hey, don't, don't let me interrupt. I just, uh, was getting a nice shot of local media in action. Yes. Alright. Alright, there's NBC5. Alright, let's go inside and see what's, what it's looking like indoors.
There's Kimberlyson from Grand Isle.
Good evening, I'm Jade Adams, I'm from Strapper.
Good evening, thank you for hosting us. I'm Jeff Botsaw-Jordan, I'm from Barnet.
I'm Beth Quimby and I'm from Linden.
Hi there, I'm Crystal Carroll, I'll be there.
Sorry, I'm DeeDee Grant and I am the other co-chair of the task force. And you can see some other members up on the screen who were not able to be here tonight. They were here earlier at our meeting, our regularly scheduled meeting that went from 11:00 to 5:30. But they had to make their way home. So, thank you for being here. I appreciate you taking the time to come here. I like to remind folks that the work that we are doing is advisory in nature. So we are not a body that has any power in terms of making decisions and then implementing them. We are just going to advise. We are coming up with a report. We will hopefully vote on a few new maps. Maybe one, maybe two, at the most, three. And we will send those recommendations to the legislature that will be convened in January. And in January, that is when decisions will be made and that will those decisions will be made by legislators in the House and the Senate. And I also like to say that the goals of Act 73, which are up here on, on the screen, I'll, I'll read it. To ensure that each student is provided substantially equal educational opportunities that will prepare them to thrive in a 20th century world. It is the intent of the General Assembly to work strategically, intentionally, and thoughtfully to ensure that each incremental change to Vermont's public education system provides strength and support to its only constitutionally required service. So H454 was a big bill. It was a lot of work last session. And it was fairly divisive and complicated and I've heard from a lot of my constituents about H454. At the end of the day, I didn't vote for the bill. My co-chair also did not vote for the bill, but the reason that we're here tonight is because we felt our voices were important to have at the table. I was a high school teacher for many, many years. I've been on the school board I've been on the school board for eight years. Um, my colleague, Edie, is chair of the Mount Mansfield School Board. Um, and we felt that our voices were important to, to have at the tables as folks were really committed to education and public education. I will pass it on to Edie. So, Act 73 is 147-page bill. Wow, 147 pages. Eight of those pages are the work of the task force. So, we're here just for that. The other things that come out of that law include changing the work for the Commission of the Future of Public Education. There's a voting for its working group to figure out if we change districts. How do we make sure that voices are heard? How do we make sure that there's, um, appropriate representative? The Agency of Education has
I wonder if there are hearings like this going on in other parts of Vermont? I wonder if city council, oh no, um, I was going to say, I wonder if city council meets here? But it meets in, uh, City Hall, Winuski City Hall. I think they have it posted up here.
We've already been up here.
Alright, well, I think if you want to see the, uh, the meeting, it looks like it's being, uh, recorded online. Um, this is an interesting, uh, moment certainly in, uh, public schooling in Vermont. Wow, check it out. Got to step back for that. That's, that's pretty cool. Alright, from, uh, the, uh, redistricting consolidation hearing at the Winuski School District. Goodbye from beautiful Scenic Burlington.